I'd like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us in this regularly scheduled May sixth, twenty twenty four city council meeting. As you come in tonight, if you're a guest with us, which would be to my right, to everyone else's left. There's a set of double doors. You walk through those double doors. There's a desk. On that desk, there's a sign in sheet. If you're a guest, please sign in. City clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Morrissey. Palladino. Pratt. Sharp. Soha. Stuccio. Veer. Wolfram. Mayor Stockford.
Here.
All present mayor.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move into approval of the agenda. Now, I've got a couple requests. I've got one letter here from Ian Church. I've got another letter somewhere right here from Scott Sessions. And then Dennis Wayne Scott also wanted something added under communications about the cannon down at the courthouse. And and Dave's got new business Airport M dot A W O S contract. That would be four additions to the agenda, three under communications, one under new business. Do you guys want to talk about this? Do you want to add them? Do you want to? This is all stuff that came in after the after the agenda went out, but I'm fine with adding it if you guys want to. Yeah. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to add on communications item E, Ian Church letter, item F, Scott Sessions letter, on item D, Dennis Wayne Scott communication regarding cannon. And then new business item F Airport M dot A W O S contract. Do I have a motion? Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilwoman Veer to amend the agenda. All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda? Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt to approve the agenda. All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. We have an agenda. We'll move into public comments on agenda items only during this time. The podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. And remember, this is on agenda items only. So if you are going to speak during this particular public comment period, it needs to have a direct tie to something that is present on the agenda. The podium is now open.
Joseph Hendy, one eighty one Rhea Street. Uh, I wanted to thank everybody for at the last meeting for voting no on the um assessment for Ian Church. It seems as if the rest of you violated the charter, but during the recent council meeting, Ian Church's special assessments assessment was pardoned likely in exchange for political support for Mayor Stockford's state representative campaign. This decision appears to reflect favor towards favoritism towards Mr. Church due to his position at as an associate professor at Hillsdale College. Moving forward, it seems prudent for the council to consider extending forgiveness to all who request it, giving the prevailing sentiment among members that special assessments are inequitable. The council's can inconsistency particularly evident in their treatment of Mr. Church's case rises concern about favoritism towards individuals associated with Hillsdale College, which often often receives public funding for projects of questionable benefit for the broader community. It is essential for the city's attorney to provide sound legal counsel on such matters to ensure fairness and transparency in the decision making process. This body needs to bring value and forgiveness to the whole community that asks, not just a select few. Uh, Scott Session knows far too well how our city council is controlled by the college and and this body serves them. I feel that's exactly why he wrote the letter that I made public. No one that is employed by the college should have been allowed to vote on Ian Church's forgiveness if they're a college employee and a member of this body. It seems your city attorney doesn't care about AG opinion six zero zero five or or keeping you even ethical. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Any more public comment?
Scott Sessions, one oh two Cold Springs Circle, Hillsdale, Michigan. Dear City Council, this letter is a formal cons contest of a special assessment that was assessed against our property at one oh two Cold Springs Circle, Hillsdale, Michigan. Four nine two four two. We are requesting that our special assessment be restricted from the assessed role. Why do we seek our special assessment being removed from the assessed role? We have lived in the property since nineteen ninety four and have paid taxes since then. We believe that our taxes have more than paid for a road work that is being done to Cold Springs Circle. Additionally, for thirty years, we have lived here. Cold Springs Circle has been a dirt road. Complaints were made in the nineteen nineties by us, two thousand, two thousand ten about the conditions of the road. Little to no action was ever taken to improve the surface until now, despite paying taxes all these years. But do we really believe that this argument should be provided any weight that comes to having the special assessment against our property? The answer is no, because these are not factors that should be considered when um expect accepting exempting a property from a special assessment. According to the claim not of not being able to afford a special assessment is mute to because no standard or test was ever applied to ensure that this was the case. Our real informal issue for contesting our special assessment is because of arbitrary and capricious decision was made by the Hillsdale City Council to strike a partial for the assessment role without any formal standard or tests to do so. This has created an unfair playing field for the rest of our residents because there's no justification for that action. Arbitrary and capricious decisions are made when the city council has made the decision to act on the request without having a set standard or some sort of test in place that can be used to make that decision. No such standard was used to strike such an assessment from the role. Additionally, the Michigan Municipal League M M L and its handbook for public officials warns against arbitrary and capricious decisions when it reads when it reads that is used standards should be put in place for decision making by public officials that will result in effective decision making. It should be noted that they were specifically talking about zoning laws when mentioning arbitrary and conspicuous decisions. However, a set of used standards is important for any type of special treatment that may be provided to residents outside the normal conditions. The exempt exemption of a special assessment at your last meeting is, in our opinion, special treatment as a no as no set of standards were applied to provide the striking of the partial from the assessed role. If one property is being struck from the assessment role without a set of standards, then all properties should be subject to the same. It doesn't matter if it's a double lot, a single lot, or how it is assessed. If one property is stricken from the assessment role without a set of standards, then arbitrary and capricious decision has been made. We implore the Hillsdale City Council to strike all the properties from the assessed role due to the arbitrary and capricious decision as a new standard has been set, which is essentially is no standard at all. One person can receive a decision that is arbitrary and capricious in nature. Then this same decision should be afforded to all properties on the assessed role. Understandably, we accept the special assessment. If the Hillsdale City Council reverses his prior decision, then develops a set of standards that would make a striking special assessment access acceptable based on a standard test that is developed that is considered and followed by the city council makes such decisions. This test would be similar to standard tests that are followed by the planning commission when rezoning are considered by a zoning board of appeals Z B A when variance are considered or by a board of review when a property when a poverty exemption is requested. To accomplish this, we would advise the following. Prior special assessment roles be reversed. A new ordinance be created establishing standards to be used by the city council when considering striking a special assessment from the assessed role. A test developed that the city council must consider when striking a special assessment that is similar to the process above and creation of a new special assessment role for the areas in question with applications that accept then then accepted for partials to be stricken from the role. Incoming to the advisement, we will we have reviewed the city charter, Home Rule City Act, General Property Tax Act in the city of Hillsdale's Code No Ordinance. The city charter allows for special assessments with an ordinance has been established. The Home Rule City Act and the General Property Tax Acts allow for special assessments if a local municipality has created procedures in its city charter or its ordinance for such. The city Hillsdale to close, we ask for good governance and the decision that was made was not good governance. Again, we yield and ask for special assessments to be stricken from the assessment role until a time in which city council has formally created a process that is fair and equitable to all taxpayers of our community. Sincerely, Scott Morris Sessions.
Thank you, Scott. Any more public comment? I would remind you guys that there is a three minute limit on public comment. Uh, that was seven minutes. I let Scott go longer because I he made the effort to come up here and wanted to read his letter. Um, but if there is somewhere else on the agenda where this is going to be addressed and you can have an opportunity to speak and it's going to be longer than if we're going to make an exception to our public comment period, I would ask that people wait until that particular portion of the agenda. Do I need to wait? You if uh Marty, if you think you're going to take more than three minutes, then wait until your letter. If you're going to go quicker than that, then this is a fine period to to use it.
Good evening, council. My name is Martin Ricketts. I live at one seventy one Westwood Drive, and I've lived there for more than twenty years. The reason why I'm here tonight is to contest the assessment put forth on my property. Um, because of the cold springs, Westwood Street repair. Council, I use a very small fraction of Westwood Drive. I back out of my driveway. I travel about forty, maybe fifty feet to spring or to Spring Street, and I either turn left or I turn right. Um, in the summer of two thousand twenty one, when the I believe the letter I originally sent said two thousand twenty on the storms that redecorated the country club and everything, they clipped my house in our neighborhood as well, too. But I spent thousands, thousands of dollars on tree trimmers, stump grinding services and personal equipment to clean up down trees in my yard because of the awful weather that the city experienced that year. And some of those trees that came down in my yard were widow makers and um we do have children in the neighborhood playing, and if one of those trees would have come down on one of those kids or anybody for that matter and hurt them or worse yet, kill them, I couldn't live with that on my conscience. So I immediately had to take care of that, and that costs a lot of money. Um, last year, speaking of money, last year in the March of twenty twenty three, I needed to go full right hip replacement. Thankfully, I'm no longer in pain, but if anybody up here has had a major medical situation, you know, those bills don't stop coming. So um and also with the improvement of the city um on these streets, the city isn't going to create a better shortcut um from bacon to Spring Street. Just traffic is going to increase dramatically. I mean, that's more new new pavement equals more traffic. Like I said earlier, I've been at this address for twenty years. I'm a quiet person. I keep to myself, and I'm not a problem to anybody. I've given thousands of dollars in taxes over those twenty plus years to the city of Hillsdale, and I don't think I should be punished for something I believe I've already paid for several times over. I believe my portion of the street has been paid for. So I'm closing. I just want you guys to remember I'm a single guy with a single paycheck, just trying to hold it together. And, you know, I would like you to take my requests with heavy consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Martin. Any more public comment? Regarding agenda items. Seeing none, we will close the podium and we'll move into the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city and B P U claims of April eleventh, payroll of April twenty fifth. We've got city council minutes of April fifteenth, airport advisory committee minutes of April thirteenth, finance minutes of April fifteenth, cemetery minutes of May first, budget work session minutes of April twenty second, East Saint Joe Griswold testing services, right of way use, Chon's five K run for cancer, Hillsdale College's commencement, street closure agreement, Henkel Adams Park use agreement, sexual abuse prevention policy and procedures, July third fireworks applications, pop and grub event, street closure, Hillsdale Business Association, Summer in the City Sales slash Cars Show, event, street closure, and Community Development Minutes of April twenty fourth. Any discussion on any of the items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. May I have a roll call, city clerk?
Yes, Councilperson Palladino. Pratt. Sharp. Soha. Stuccio. Veer. Wolfram. Mayor Stockford.
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey. Nine zero approved.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, we will move on in communications petitions to item letter A, which is the Hillsdale Community Library Annual Report. Rebecca?
Hello, uh, my name is Rebecca. I am the current library director at the Hillsdale Community Library. I am here to speak to you all today on behalf of the library and the board who wanted me to present our most recent annual report. Uh, unfortunately, because this predates my time here by at minimum five months. Um, I did compile all the data, but some of it, I obviously wasn't here for some of it or most all of it. Um, but I can still speak on it. Um, so a lot of the beginning of our annual report just has to do with items regarding our mission, our statement, all of our staff, all of that. Um, then it gets broken down into um all of our circulation data. So this has to do with um how many active card types we have. So we have um our residents who fall under city of Hillsdale, Hillsdale Township and Jefferson Township. Uh, we also have a lot of people who subscribe to us, so they spend forty dollars a year to use our library instead of wherever their free library is at, whether it's in Hillsdale County. Um, for example, I also just had somebody from Jackson County come and want to spend forty dollars on our library. So that's a pretty positive thing for us. Um, we also have donor cards and faculty cards, so those are cards that um either come from part of part of our staff or um people who have over time donated quite a bit of money to the library and the benefit of the library. Um, one thing I would like to point out is that our total legal service area is about eleven thousand five hundred and forty six or fifty six, five hundred and forty six. Um, and we only have eleven hundred total active cards at this time. Um, which is crazy to think because many people know that the library is full of books. That's the point of us, but beyond that, we also have multiple different services, um things such as using our computers for free. Um, we have printing, copying and faxing. We now have notarizing again. Um, we can answer pretty much any question you have, so long as it doesn't pertain to taxes um or things that we're obviously not certified to do. We can't provide legal help. Um, but we have incredible reach um with both with our social media, people coming into the library, um, coming to our programs. Last year or the last, uh, I guess fiscal year, we had what seems to me a record amount of items that circulated. Um, whether it was from uh our personal library or our our home library, which has about fifty thousand items physically with around another fifty-ish or thirty thousand for uh electronic things. So that would be ebooks and the audio or ebooks and the audiobooks, which are phenomenal for people who are on the go, who are driving long distances, um, things like that, and for, of course, the people who enjoy having a book right in front of them. Um, and honestly, I would say that given uh over the course of twelve months that we only have a hundred and five currently lost items that have been out longer than forty five days. Um, that number pales in comparison to fifty thousand items. Um, so we're honestly not, we don't have too many liabilities in that sense. We are doing great with that. We get our books um at a have a almost half fifty percent off discount from our book supplier. So um to the I guess you could say our our budget for buying books is twelve thousand dollars and five twelve thousand five hundred dollars, but with our budget, we are able to purchase many books every single month. Um, so we are constantly adding new books, constantly um figuring out what people like to read in this community, um what they want of the library and um I believe every single month at our monthly board meetings, we we talk about and discuss all of the current issues that we have going on. I think we have a great um, I think we have a great ball rolling. I think things since I have been here have been pretty good. Um, and jumping back to this miscellaneous statistics, so uh, like I said, even though we are a library and the main thing that we have is books, we do also have quite a bit of people who come to us. Um, and they come to us asking for help with um printing something off that'll help them with adoption, helping them with um getting a new job, things like that where again, yes, we are based on books, but we help people so much more than just finding books. We help people get their life back into how how they want to live their life, start new opportunities, things like that. Um, and it's honestly a very it's an eye opening experience to see what other people go through and to be able to see them throughout their whole process of that, because oftentimes um they come back to us, you know, time and time again. We know how filling out forms can be and dealing with the state is not often the most fun thing to deal with, but um after a few times of coming in, um, people, they can say, hey, I finally got that job or I finally was approved for this apartment, stuff like that, where even the smallest things, um we help, we impact people's lives even just beyond getting the books. And I can't stress that enough that libraries are more than just books. Um, moving beyond that into our financials, um so you can see on the whole that we make more money than um we spend. Our biggest expenditure would be wages as that is uh the norm for most uh libraries and I'm sure many other agencies. Um, we gain most of our money through local property taxes. Um, so that is the norm for libraries, at least everywhere in Michigan. We also collect money from penal fines, which is also something very unique to Michigan, and we are so lucky to have that additional funding. We also get money from something called state aid, which basically um everything that I'm reporting to you here, I report to them as well, and they give us money for knowing how great we do and the amount of people we serve. And then lastly, we um receive money for people who are making copies. Um, and if somebody uh loses a book or is potentially late, oftentimes um we have to assess those fines, but most of the time we actually can avoid that. Um, if we just can speak to the patron and kind of build a rapport with them, sometimes we can avoid that. Um, moving down to the expenditures part, like I said, our biggest expenditure would be our wages and benefits, so paying the wonderful staff that we have at the library. Um, next would be operational, so that's a lot of things of just keeping our building up and running. Um, and then uh, you can see if you have this in front of you, I'm not sure, but we spend just over sixteen thousand dollars on collections. And um we have very little capital outlay that we're planning just because our building is is not doing too terribly right now. So we don't have any big construction plans uh in place. Um, and one of the other biggest things uh that our library does is provide programs to um anybody aside or um doesn't require them to have a library card. Anybody from anywhere can join our programs. For example, the person that comes from Jackson, they come for one day a week to our storytime on Thursdays. So they spend forty dollars to drive forty minutes to use our library, um which I again think that says something phenomenal, not only about the Hillsdale Library, but also Hillsdale County and Hillsdale itself. So um, it's something to feel proud about. Uh, we also, uh, in general, speaking about programs, hold a lot of programs for the junior kids. So that would be those from age five or six to eleven or twelve. Um, if you have the graph in front of you, I know that it might seem a little confusing based on the way that it is portrayed. Um, but essentially you can see that uh for every single age range that we have, we have more people attending them than not. Uh, obviously, we have a very low teen group range, but teens often tend to be hard to get into the library because they're competing with after school curriculars at the high school or middle school and um honestly, sometimes it's hard. As a teen, I'm sure you can imagine you don't want to spend all of your free time reading. Unfortunately, they want to spend time with their friends at the movies, stuff like that. Um, but either way, we see a good handful of patrons of all ages, all demographics, and it's something that I think um, I think if you qualify for a free library card, you should definitely come to the library and check us out at least once and maybe a book, too. Um, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Rebecca. Is there any questions for Rebecca while she's at the uh Councilman Morrissey?
Yeah, on the matter of the expired cards, is there any system in place to notify people when their cards are expired?
It kind of depends. Um, it depends on, so when you sign up for a library card, um you can sign up for notifications. Some people don't have them on. Um, also what we tend to see is less about notifications about that, um but more so um people who use like our electronic services, so Libby and Hoopla, so they're not generally coming to the library to check out physical items that's just on their phone. As soon as they try to check something out and it says you can't, that's pretty much the only notification that people tend to get. Um, we do occasionally, we have a lot of people, I should say, that will call us and say, I can't do this anymore, or it's been a while. Can I update it? But I don't, I don't believe we actually send out something actively.
I just suggest that you think about that, that Councilman Palladino is here. So if you just consider that a subsequent meeting, because I have a library card, but I'm sure it's expired by now because I just didn't know that it was a three hundred sixty five day deal.
Yeah.
And maybe it should be longer than that. I, you know, whatever, you know, you just consider it as, oh, I'm suggesting.
Yep. And and my experience of working in libraries, uh, for example, the first library I worked at, they had a five year period, so you got it for five years, and then my previous was three years.
My hometown, it used to be just perpetual. It just happened. So anyway, it's a it's a policy decision that you can make, but you know, I guess it should be revisited at some point.
I I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but obviously I have I have my board that would need to talk about it and discuss it. Um.
And it wouldn't cost that much if you just did it by email or something.
No, I and like I said, there there might be something in place, but I have seen just from when I sign people up for new cards, a lot of them tend to not even want notifications, um which is crazy because when somebody puts an item on reserve, I don't know how they know that it's there. So, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm hmm.
Councilman Sharp?
You said the building was in good shape, but I don't argue that. Your parking lot is horrible. That is one thing I would urge you to look into in getting fixed.
I would agree with that, but I know that a lot of our patrons don't use that parking lot. I know that a lot of patron or a lot of people who use that parking lot to go to the businesses across the street and And that the school buses, which I don't believe that the library was ever. Uh, roped into that conversation for them to use that parking lot, so that parking lot sees a lot of wait traffic. From school buses every single day and all of the parents picking up their children.
So you're saying then, don't bother with the parking lot?
I'm not saying don't bother with the parking lot.
It's, it, that parking lot is probably forty, fifty years old. It used to be a car dealer there, and it's in need of attention. And you guys came into that four hundred twenty-two thousand dollars to do the building and the grounds. And there is something right there you could do with that money.
I don't believe that money has any specifications, doesn't say anything about that, it's just to us. I'm not saying it's not something that needs to be done, I don't believe that that's something that's of our main concern right now, but. At the same time, again, um, not something that I can decide on my own.
I realize that, that's why I've kind of given a hint to my constituent over there, Mr. Palladino, to bring it up, but. It's a, it was a gift and put the gift to work is what you need to do.
I would love to.
Sit on the money drawing interest off of it, which you are doing right now in the bank. I'd like to see it put to use, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Councilman Beer?
Yeah, I just had a, a question on that, um, when it's talking, uh, you know, your donations. Where does that, that big endowment that you just received, where does that show up?
So that technically won't show up on this because that happened in the current fiscal year.
Okay.
Um, so in the future, in the next one, that would show up. I don't know that I necessarily.
Now, now, this year that you're reporting on goes back to?
This would be July twenty twenty-two to June twenty twenty-three.
Okay, okay.
So I would say in the next year of doing this, since we have such a large donate, donation chunk. I would probably put that on the chart next year, but there was nothing crazy like that for this fiscal year.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any more questions for Rebecca? Councilman Wolfram?
I was gonna follow up on that, um, in the financials, you don't have an, uh, an asset. On here, so if you had four hundred thousand dollars, where would that show up in the financial data that you have? If, if you were, if it were to be in this year, you have the revenues and the expenditures, but, um.
I would include another little section that has that, so in that circular chart, I would add in another. Fourth or fifth, whatever the number is, that would add in however, how much space that would take up in that chart. Um, and then say donations, um. That, but like I said, there was nothing substantial in that from this, this, the, the year that this is reporting on. There was nothing that would necessarily, um, make me want to split it up. From like just general revenues.
Any more questions for Rebecca? Rebecca, I think you're doing a fabulous job.
Thank you.
I haven't really had a chance to sit down and talk with you, but I'm very impressed, uh, I appreciate the focus. And also, I think we should thank Heidi Pruitt, Elizabeth Cole, Sierra Smith, Annette Littley. Uh, Liz Voorhees and Dakota Swafford, because you got a great team in there as well, and uh, library is a great asset.
I agree.
We appreciate what you do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, we'll move on in communications to item letter B, which is the twenty twenty-three City Planning Commission Annual Report. Is there anybody to report on this, or can we trust that council read through the packet? And Councilman Morsy is our representative on Planning Commission, do you have anything that you think needs especially pointed out? Good report. Any discussion on this item? All right, we will move on in the packet to item letter C, Special Assessment District, uh. Twenty-two dash oh seven letter, and this is the one that uh. Was addressed earlier with Martin at, Martin, do you want to come up to the podium again, please? Hello, uh, any additions that you want to make to what was said?
No, you've heard my piece, uh, we'll get this meeting going.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Martin? No? Okay, well, Martin, I, uh. I got a couple of things to say. I voted against all these assessments. I have been opposed to them since the beginning, as a matter of fact, I've voted against tax increases my entire time on city council. I resent anybody saying that that's me buying votes from people. Because if that's the case, I guess I've been buying votes since I've been elected to council, because I've always voted against tax increases. And I will continue to do so, and if I can give every single person back their money on these special assessments, I will. I don't agree with them, I think they're wrong. Council came up with this as a policy, and I have respect for all these people sitting around this table, I appreciate you all. It is the city policy, so we're a group, we come up with things together, um, but if I can push back against them, I will. And this is because of what the nature of what I see our job is up here and what I see my job as. I see us as representatives of the people. Okay, I see the city staff as, as, you know, especially Dave, the city manager. Their job is to, uh, run the day-to-day operations of the city, that's what they do. Sometimes that puts council members at odds with them. Sometimes I will stick up for residents when I don't even think they're right, and I'm not saying that I don't think you're right, because I think you are right, Marty, but. The only thing that stands between the city government as an institution, running over people's rights, is city council. That's what we're elected up here to do, that's what I see, we're not another arm of city government. We are the representatives of the people and we are a buffer between the city and the residents. So sometimes that puts us at odds with city staff, doesn't mean I don't respect city staff, doesn't mean I don't admire. What city staff does, doesn't mean that ninety-nine out of a hundred times I don't agree with Dave, or I don't agree with Kim or Jason. I think you guys all do a great job, but I don't represent you guys. Besides the ones that live in the city, which there are a couple city staff who live in the city, represent the residents, so. I would vote to give every person back their special assessment if I could, because. And it gets unconscionable right now to charge people extra money against their will in the midst of inflation. I resent even more the, the allegation that members of council would. Uh, would be complicit in buying votes for me, I know all these people up here. They, we don't always agree on things, but they vote what their conscience tells them to vote, and they vote what they. Think is in the best interest of the city, and I respect everybody on council for that, even if I don't agree with you guys on stuff. So, um, to me, good governance is low taxes. As far as making special considerations for people, I think Councilman Palladino pointed out at the last meeting, that's all we do up here. Is make considerations, we get into these conversations about fairness and equity. You know, I, the, fairness is important, but it means different things to different people. My twelve-year-old and fourteen-year-old, fairness means different things to them than what it means to me, they often think that I'm very unfair, I'm sure. I don't think it's fair that Vine, Mead, Garden, Ripon, Fayha, Hallett, all got their streets fixed without being special assessed. And now we're assessing people, how's that fair? How's it fair to the people getting specially assessed that those people got their streets fixed on grants? And, and I'm not saying that as a criticism of using the grants, I think that was a great idea, but the point that I'm making is we make special considerations up here all the time. I feel like my job is to make sure residents don't get run over. My job is to protect their money, I've always voted against taxes raising, and I think that is good government. I don't think that's arbitrary, I think that's consistent, so. Happy to hear from any other council members, otherwise, I'll make a motion to remove this guy's property from the assessment.
I'll, I'll not on the agenda. If you're gonna, if you're gonna undo the role in any way. The last move that was made, and I believe based on a conversation I had with Mr. Thompson after that meeting. He advised the assessment role, the assessment role has been confirmed. You cannot amend it in any way without reopening the public hearing process. So I would not, I would not continue with that motion because you're now. Treading on the line of an open meetings problem, it's not, that action item is not on the agenda. If you would like to suggest to perhaps the Operations and Governance Committee that they consider taking a look at this and. And making a recommendation to council, that's on the agenda for an action item, that would be the appropriate way to do it, but. You cannot, you've confirmed that role.
I didn't, I voted against it.
Well, but you do not control the council.
You're right, I don't.
A majority of the council approve the role. If you want to talk about arbitrary action, that would be arbitrary action.
I think you've said enough, Jack, you, you're our attorney and that's what you're up here for, and I appreciate you, and I appreciate that you can. Step in and tell us when we're doing things procedurally wrong.
Right, and, and I think you gotta be careful on this one.
Thank you. Do you have something to add, Councilman Sharp?
Absolutely. We are opening Pandora's box if we do this, because we started fixing these streets back in two thousand seventeen. We got going after these streets, and then they're gonna want their money back to people who are specially assessed. We're gonna be, you want to break the city, that'll break the city, it'll take any reserve money we have. To pay them back with interest on top of that, because they won't just take the money back, they'll want the interest. We have worked since two thousand, what, twelve, we had the Fair Committee?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yes, sir.
And they come up with nothing they could do, Dave came up with this when he became our city manager, the streets are getting fixed. Yes, it's local streets, let's look at it this way, if you drive on these streets, the, the, the horrible ones like Westwood Drive. You're gonna beat your car up, you're gonna spend thousands of dollars fixing that car over a ten-year period if you keep that car that long. So what is the solution? Fix the streets, or you keep driving on the local streets, they are local streets. I would ask the mayor, then since you're against a special assessment, then how would you come up with the funding to pay for this? That's the question everybody wants to know, where's the money gonna come from? Because we've tried every other thing, we tried a city income tax. That got shot down, that was a let balloon.
Okay, okay, are you, are you not, are you done? Okay, um, and right before you sit, before that, Greg. Two thousand sixteen, the Fair Committee did come up with a solution, it was called the Street Millage, it was placed on the ballot, the residents of Hillsdale voted for it. That was meant to go towards the streets, that was a four percent, that was a four mil. Street Millage, you want to know how I just fixed the streets? Do we not have a multimillion-dollar budget surplus right now, guys? Yes, we do. We sold land in the industrial park, we sold the transfer station, Three Meadows, we have a multimillion-dollar budget surplus. I don't like saying this stuff because I respect council and I respect your decisions, but I know the money's there to fix the streets, damn it, and now.
Mayor, I must object to your comment, the money is not there to fix the streets. The amount of money we have in reserve is only enough to do potentially one subdivision. It wouldn't even cover Westwood, and we would be, have no fund balance, so for you. That is, I, I have to object to that statement because that is not accurate.
Okay, well, thanks, Dave, that, I mean, I don't like saying that stuff all out, but if I'm gonna get put on the spot, then.
Mr. Mayor made a nice campaign speech for your new position, for, but this council has worked hard. This, there's not a tax that's passed on this board that we don't pay ourselves, we live in this community as well. These roads are in terrible shape, government's responsibility is the infrastructure, and we have to repair it in the ways we see fit. And we've come up with this, so that was a beautiful campaign speech for your next role, but please. Mr. Mayor, also, it's in council goals, it's been in council goals for years. Fix the streets, public services, public safety, that's simple as that, fix the streets.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not objecting to that, Councilwoman Pratt?
Then how did we forgive Mr. Church's last meeting? We forgave his special assessment, correct? Correct. Three of us, I did not, but that passed, so yes, we opened a can of worms. If you do it for one, you're gonna have to do it for the other.
So here, here, here's the process, so they, a resident has to come to that public hearing or submit. Their request in writing to be considered at that particular time, council considered that. Forgave that and then approved the tax role, so the tax role is approved. And based on our understanding, when I say our, the city staff, Kim, myself, and, and reviewing that. Um, residents have to come to the city council or submit that request in writing to be considered. Uh, once the tax role is approved, it, it's our opinion that it's off the table. Um, and the next step would be, so if Mr. Church had came here and we denied his request, even though he requested it. He would have an avenue in which to appeal to the state tax tribunal, because he came to city council and. Appealed his assessment, um, but it was approved, so he would not have to. Anyone else, if, if they were denied, like say those gentlemen from St. Joe that were, came here. And they could theoretically appeal to the state tax tribunal because they had came here. But anyone else that did not come during the public hearing and for consideration during that time. Is basically out of luck.
Council Wolfram, Councilman Wolfram?
But, but this is, that, that was a very different situation, because that was an issue of, was this contiguous properties? And, and lots of people have had their properties that are contiguous moved into one parcel. And the only, and the issue here was, they owned the properties and they were contiguous. Only it was partially owned by them, but this was a very unique situation. And it didn't have to do with exempting them, it had to do, are these contiguous properties, that was the issue. And that, and the people that agreed that this was a contiguous property, that's what we agreed, that these, these were contiguous properties. It wasn't agreeing on exempting them from anything.
Councilman Beer?
With, uh, Ian Church. Um, going with what Gary's saying, it was a continuous property, and he's, he's not paying as much. As he would have otherwise, he, he, he's still paying the, the five thousand dollar.
Hey, he's paying the same thing everybody else is paying him, correct?
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, he's still paying more.
Okay, well, all I know is with the streets in Hillsdale, I'll be honest with you, and I'll put it out there. That's why I'm on this council, because the roads are really important to me. Because property values, your vehicles and everything else, as a matter of fact. My dad, who has one of this SAD districts, go talk to some of the people up there, there were some people that were against it. And, uh, but their property values have gone up. When I take my route to drive to his house, I don't go down Oak Street because it's terrible. I go down Hillsdale Street, cut over on Mead and Vine or whatever, do that whole, and then go down on State Street. I plan my trips in Hillsdale if I'm going somewhere where the nice roads are. Now, I don't like SADs, I don't like charging people more money for, you know, what they consider. Our governance should provide, I've been in, you know, they're talking, they've been in this house for twenty years, thirty years. I've been in the city of Hillsdale since eighty-five, eighty-six, I've had two homes. And we've tried the income tax, it got shot down big time. So now we finally have something that's working, and all these roads are getting fixed. But because of that, the way we're doing it is we're doing an additional burden on the property owners. But property taxes, if they fall under the poverty guidelines. They can get some relief from their property taxes, now they can't get any relief from the SAD, but they can get relief from the, from the, uh, from their property taxes. Another thing, by doing the SADs, the city of Hillsdale has a lot of nonprofits. And guess what? They don't pay property tax. But when you do an SAD that has a church or some other nonprofit, they're doing great things, they can assess that. So they're gonna throw into the pot, which is in my, my world. So they're gonna throw into the pot, which is in my, my world, that's like, that's kinda nice. The. Just, you know, and, and my empathy goes for people, but like, uh, uh. Scott Sessions, I mean, he's, you know, his, and he says he, he wanted a new street back in two ninety, two thousand and two thousand and ten. Um, and that's a street that, where he lives, the only people going on that street. Are people that live on that street, are visiting who lives on that street. It's not a go through. And I, I think it would be a really disservice to the people if this council decides to. Start second guessing the course of action that we've taken. And I know there are people on this council that have always have not supported it. So it's kinda close right now, usually it passes six three. Then you have someone on, uh, people on the council that say, well, we always are giving favors. Giving favors to these big old multinational or these big corporations coming in to do, build houses. Right now, the, the city on those empty lots might be getting tax revenues as it's worth twenty thousand. And then someone builds a million dollar house on it. Now granted, they aren't gonna get the normal tax rate if they would, but eventually down the road fifteen or twenty years, they'll get that normal tax rate. They're gonna get, but there's nothing there. It's kinda like comparing something you don't have and whether that's not fair. But it's, and the, the whole point of doing the roads is that once you have nice roads. People start taking care of their house. I mean, there's end of values increase. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tony. Always a voice of reason, for sure. And to be clear, I was definitely in favor of that subdivision over there. I think that's a wonderful thing, so. Should be a good boon to it. The point I was trying to make was that we do. Pick winners and losers by the nature of what we do. Whether we make wise decisions when we do that, or whether we make bad decisions when we do that. That's just kinda the way the government's set up and it's unfortunate. And I'm not wagging my finger at any of you guys. I don't even think I'm the smartest person sitting at this table. I really don't. I look especially to. Councilman Stu Chil, Councilman Wolfram, you, heck, all you guys that are older than me, you have lived more experiences than me and. That was a finger wag. No, I'm just joking. This, this is a wise council, no doubt, okay? And a lot, it's diverse, it's diverse, um. But what can I say? I don't like the special assessments, I mean. Councilman Morrissey.
Just, just a couple of statistics here, uh, which we received. Um, the municipal street fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, there are three elements to it. Uh, one is the charter millage, which is two point five mills, and that's twenty-seven percent. Of the total revenues that we collect for the roads. Uh, the voted millage, which the mayor was mentioning earlier, is three point five mills. That was. Fifty-five percent or slightly half, slightly more than half of what we spend on the roads. And then the SAD revenue is eighteen percent. So if we're going to continue, now, that would change on those years when we get state grants. Obviously, they'd all, all those percentages would go down. But, um, uh, if we're going to, you know, if, if we're going to do anything with SAD. We've got to replace that eighteen percent that we normally need. For doing the level of, of road building that we've been doing. It's too bad that nobody was doing much road building for thirty or forty years in this town. But that's what we're stuck with now, and that's the reality. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sorry, Marty. We'll move on in the packet to item letter D, Hillsdale County Commissioner update. Commissioner Ingles.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I have no update tonight, but I'll answer any questions if you have any questions tonight.
Yes, sir. What's the latest on moving the courthouse annexed over to by the sheriff's department?
So we're working on putting together a package for Lifeways, uh, where Lifeways currently is. Uh, our next step is talking to Nathan Hall at the National Center for State Courts. That will include the judges, the sheriff and the facilities department. We'll get a drawing on a floor plan. For that building and then it'll move to the architect.
Is, is that building larger than the current, the next city guys are in?
Yes, we have plenty of extra space and that should help with moving some of the other. Um, additional courts that we've got, drug court, community court, domestic court. Um, so we'll see how the layout actually comes back, but there are, um. Where we're at right now is we are trying to get the drawings for that building from Nathan Hall.
Thanks, Doc.
Any more questions for the commissioner? Thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
All right, last item and communications petitions, item, item, letter E. Dennis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
That's, excuse me, I'm sorry, that's not the last item. There's also a letter from, uh, Mr. Church. And Sessions, but Scott already read his letter, so I. Anyways, continue.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, on Thursday of last week, I was able to, uh. Which we had a little trouble there, but, uh, part of it was my, my fault, cause I can't read. With my eyes, so, but in the meantime, we had a national day of prayer. And I, I was trying to figure out when I was setting it up for a national day of prayer, where to put it. And when we did it, of course, the ones that were singing, they always sung there at the, into the. The courthouse. We actually used to have it where the steps are on the, uh. West side, but, uh, you know, because of the functions and everything going on. We couldn't have it there, so we had it over on the side because of the plugins for the, uh, soundtracks and stuff. But I thought about having it up by the gun and stuff, or over by the. Uh, waterfalls, which I had thought would have been a good place for it. Well, the gentleman didn't have long enough court. He was already set up, couldn't really change it in the middle of things. But when I was up there looking at the guns, now I don't know if Katie passed out pictures to him or, or what.
County property.
When you, when you look at the picture here, this is coming up Howell Street and, and you see. The people that come up Howell Street shops there, they look over there, they see this, uh, old gun that was put there for. You know, for our, our benefits. It also represented the men and women that died for us. Why they were in war or whatever, you know, it was a, a, a signia for us. It's part of our heritage here in, in Hillsdale. And I can say that because I've been here for fifty years now, or actually fifty-one years. So, you know, over a half a century I've been here. So I, I, I feel like I'm part of the community, so, and a lot of people know me through the years. But as you can see here, some of the things here, how. The gun's all rusted, paint's peeling, the different things that are going on. You know, this didn't just happen overnight. This didn't happen over last year. This has been neglect because it's done. Not your fault.
That's city.
Because this is on county.
Then why are you wasting?
Property, not city property. The only reason I'm bringing it up to the city council is because. Our, uh, commission, or our councilmen that are in that area, you know, I, I understand Mrs. Pratt. Or Ms. Pratt, you're a part of Ward Two and Will's part of Ward Two. And you probably don't get up there, and a lot of people do, don't, you know, uh, because we've been around here so long, we've seen. How that, the place looks and never really got a close look at it. And I, you know, I'm legally blind, which you guys know that, and, uh. You know, I've been fighting cancer for the last year, but I'm still here, I'm still fighting, I'm still standing. And this is part of our community. We need to take consideration in what we see that is part of our community. It's time that we, the people stand up for what's right. Take in consideration the people that we have, that has bled and died for us to have the freedom that we have right now. And, and we let a piece of equipment that may not be useful for anything, but it's there for memory. We've seen, uh, BLMs, we've seen a lot of different ones go through. Out our United States, tore down statutes that meant things to other people. We've seen a lot of things being destroyed. But when you see neglect, that's something different. That's downright neglect. And, and we've had too much neglect in this, uh, city. A lot of the things that you guys were just talking about, I remember talking to the, the one that was in charge of the streets before. He didn't, he didn't believe in doing preventive maintenance. He told me that, right? Right over there at Davis School when I questioned him years ago. He didn't believe in doing preventive maintenance. Thankfully, we got people now that's in charge, that's running things, that does believe in preventive maintenance. This gun should have never got there. There should have been preventive maintenance to that. You know, and, and these are the things that we need to stand for. If it's our community, we live here, we should stand for this. And we should stand for what's right, not what's wrong. There's a lot of different things that's going on. I, I thank the mayor for his stand on not raising taxes. I thank those that others that have stood a, and don't believe in raising the taxes. But I do understand that sometimes it has to come from somewhere. And, uh, you know, we're just people here, every one of us work here. I don't see anybody here that's multimillionaires that I believe, that can just go about every day. And look at everything and say, well, I don't have need of that. Let them take care of it. Or are we the kind of people that are turning around and says, hell no, we're gonna turn around, we're gonna do something about it? And that's what we need to do. We are people that need to stand. We, the people, need to stand for what's right. And if a little thing like that cannon over there is neglected, what else is being neglected in this town?
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Okay, item, letter F in communications petitions, Ian Church's letter. Ian, would you like to read your letter?
I don't feel like I really need to read the letter to you. I'm, I'm sorry you were able to have a chance to read it. I'm, I'm. See, I've opposed the, um, as you all know, I've opposed the special assessments. And I'm sympathetic, understand the argument that roads have to get paved one way or another. Uh, I'm just on the other side of that, that issue. Uh, my, um, uh, point has, has always been that if, if the citizens are gonna have to pay for the, for the city's roads. Uh, I just hope that the, the, the outcome could be fair, uh, across the board to, to different families and. Uh, as I mentioned last time, uh, my family was being uniquely expected to pay eight thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars. Uh, to pay towards the road, which is far more than any other household had this special assessment. Um, and, um, I'm enormously grateful, grateful for your decision, uh, to, uh, reduce our. Our burden, uh, to only, only, uh, five thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. Uh, towards the roads. That does make a big difference. It's still more than anyone else in our district. We're tied with two other, two other families, our neighbors that we co-own the lot with. Uh, but that makes a big difference. Um, and I just wanna make it clear beyond the things I, I said in the letter that. We're not asking not to pay our fair share, uh, we were just asking that our share be fair. Um, you know, as, as, and again, I'm enormously grateful for the decision from the April fifteenth, uh, meeting. It does have a concrete. Impact, uh, on our, our lives, um. And, uh, and as a part of the special assessment, is my understanding the city's policy was to. Um, that when a resident owns multiple lots, uh, around their home, that their burden is only five thousand dollars. Uh, and so given that my lots are contiguous, as, as has already been noted, I'm truly grateful for. Um, the decision the city council made regarding my family's situation was, I think, in keeping with the city's own standards. Uh, so, uh, again, I thank you for your time and consideration, uh, for, for being. Uh, the body to, to hear out these kinds of, uh, situations. Uh, and for, um, holding that public hearing, uh, allowing me to, to speak my piece, and I just wanted to, uh, just add my gratitude today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Church. All right, we'll move on to item, letter F in, excuse me, letter G in communications petitions. Uh, Scott Sessions' letter. Scott, do you have anything to add? Does anybody have anything to Scott regarding this? Questions for Scott? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Scott. We'll move on to communications petitions. We've got no introduction, adoption, ordinances, public hearing. We've got no old business tonight. So we will move right into new business. Item, letter A, Hillsdale Business Association gaining license approval. Katie, it's got your name on it.
Yep, so HBA basically needs, um. Approval from council to submit for a raffle license for their summer in the city, um, event held on August, August second. From four to eight.
Sounds simple enough. Anybody from HBA here? I have a motion. Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt to approve the attached resolution. All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we will move into new business, item, letter B. Hillsdale Renaissance Land Division Application. Kim?
All right, Hillsdale Renaissance submitted an application to split their property, um, located at the corner of Bacon and Howell Street. They wanna sell the back portion of the building, which when you look at the building, you can see where it was clearly a different design and constructed at a different time. That portion of the building, they have a buyer who is interested, so they'd like to split that off and sell it to a different owner. Because it's in the plat for the downtown, um, it requires council approval for, before they can do that. So that's why it's in front of you.
Okay, easy enough. Any questions for Kim? Nobody from Hillsdale Renaissance here? You have a question, Councilman Palladino?
Are there any projected changes to the overall assessment taxable value?
The taxable value will uncap when it sells to fifty percent of the current market, but it's already, it just uncapped a couple of years ago when they purchased it. So it won't be much of a change.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Veer. All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we'll move on into new business, item, letter C, which is set public hearing. For Oprah application, and remember, guys, this is just setting a public hearing, we're just setting a date. If I can find it in my packet, that is, one twenty-one. Okay, City Clerk's office is in receipt of an application for obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for property located at thirty-seven McCollum Street. Owned by GSG Generations LLC. The application is for tax abatement on the rehabilitation. Of the former Hillsdale Fire Department Engine House number one building. The project has an estimated cost of five hundred thousand in renovations to allow for retail space on the first floor. And two residential apartment units on the second floor. The property in question is within an Oprah district created in two thousand thirteen. Andrew, do you have anything to add to it? Okay, any questions for Andrew? You should win.
You know, in our lifetime, Bruce, the old Dial-A-Ride building, right across from what is now the county office building.
Okay.
At the corner of the alley behind the, uh, runs parallel with Howell.
Okay, thank you. So right next to the Masonic Lodge.
Yep.
Any other questions for Andrew? Thank you for coming, Andrew.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, we're setting a public hearing and this is for. May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, which will be our next meeting. Do I have a motion to set the public hearing?
So moved, support.
All right, guys, we gotta. All right, guys, we gotta differentiate here. Okay, motion by Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Veer to set a public hearing for May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, um, for this application for Oprah exemption certificate. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we'll move on to new business to item, letter D, M Dot Trunk Line Maintenance Contract Renewal. Jason?
Evening, Mayor, Council. As our current contract, uh, is set to expire this year, uh, September thirtieth, um, M Dot sent out, uh, a couple of weeks ago the renewal packet to renew the trunk line maintenance contract. Uh, with the maintenance contract, uh, we do need a resolution to name the signatures or the authorized signature, who's authorized to sign the contract. Um, and on this, uh, agenda summary on the last, um, item, I put all amounts and percentages are unchanged from the previous contract. I'm actually gonna change that to, uh, anticipated not to change from the previous contract. The reason being is, um, I haven't seen the actual finished contract yet. M Dot has changed the way that they're doing things this year. They're going all electrical, uh, everything's gonna be signed with windspan. So what they're asking for is a resolution, um, some paperwork from my office to be sent to them so they can draft the final draft and then set for signatures on that. Um, so I, I just wanted to note that I'm anticipating all of them staying, um, which is our snow hauling reimbursement, um, our, um, bulk item cost, our pay, overtime pay and stuff like that. I'm not expecting it to be the same. But, uh, with that, I would recommend through resolution, uh, for this council to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the M Dot contract, two, two, twenty twenty-four dash zero three two eight on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason?
That's a motion on my part.
No discussion? Do I have a second? Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Morrissey, uh, to approve the re, attached resolution, uh, authorizing the mayor and the clerk to sign the M Dot contract on behalf, contract on behalf of the city. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will move into item, letter E in new business, which is M Dot Drain Repair.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Jason.
Um, a few weeks ago, um, city staff noticed outing, uh, in front of the Kroger's Plaza in front of the Deceleration Lane Southbound. Uh, there's a couple, two, uh, stormwater catch basins that is in very need of repairs. The adjacent concrete pavement is also needed repairs. Uh, part of the maintenance contract that we're going to approve, um, I've been working with M Dot, um, cause it is M Dot, even though it's the Deceleration Lane of Kroger's, it is under M ninety-nine, uh, M Dot jurisdiction. Uh, so what that is, is part of M Dot, or, um, I had to work with M Dot to get what's called a TWA form, uh, tra, uh, transportation work authorization, um, solicit three quotes. And when we solicit three quotes, um, Concord Excavating, um, was a low quote at twenty-three thousand three one nine. Um, they also put five thousand dollars in for traffic control. Uh, the city's gonna offer to do that traffic control because we can do it for about fourteen hundred dollars instead of the five thousand. Um, so with the paperwork I've already submitted at M Dot, um, they've already approved Concord Excavating as a subcontractor for the city hills as part of our maintenance agreement. All city expenditures will be reimbursed by M Dot through what's called a four twenty-six form, which I already filled out. Um, with that being said, I would, uh, ask for city council, um, to award the stormwater drain repairs located at two ninety West Carl Road to Concord Excavating in the amount of twenty-three thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars.
Councilman Sharp?
I could verify that pit, and I've seen people hit it numerous times where it sucked in. It definitely needs to be fixed, and I was always wondering who was gonna fix that. And I'm definitely in favor of this.
Thank you.
Councilman Veer?
Jason, doesn't that also include five thousand for traffic control? Is that part of the twenty-three?
So there, what it was is on the, you've verified as part of the proposal for Concord, their full, their full proposal was actually twenty-eight thousand three one nine. And then they deducted five thousand if someone else did traffic control, which we're gonna do the traffic control outside, which is still reimbursable by the state. Uh, we're just gonna put it under our monthly instead of what's called the four twenty-six form.
We, we've used Concord before, haven't we, Jason?
Yes, sir. Um, yeah, they're currently, uh, gonna be doing the St. Joe Project. They're doing the water sewer project for BPU. They helped us on State Street a few years ago. Did that work?
Okay, that's what I thought. Very good. I think Parish did hallet. Did Concord or Parish? Maybe it was Concord.
Concord did, yeah, you're correct, sir.
Also, just to keep in mind, we will get reimbursed from M Dot for this work.
Yes, sir. Hundred percent.
Awesome. Any questions? Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt to award the stormwater drain repairs to Concord Excavating in the amount of twenty-three thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars. May I have a roll call, City Clerk?
Councilperson Pratt. Sharp.
Yes.
Soha.
Yes.
Sutcliffe. Veer.
Yes.
Woolfram. Mayor Stockford.
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey. And Palladino. It's nine zero approved.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, Jason. All right, we'll move on to miscellaneous reports. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, here, correct, Dave. All right, we will move on to new business, item, letter F. Airport M Dot A W O S contract. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is something that actually came in front of the council last year. It was strictly for maintenance at that particular time that council approved. But since that time, um, M Dot received a federal grant, and they're actually, uh, as part of this contract, looking to replace the entire AWOS system. So we'll get a new system, and as part of that, they want to update the contract, um, to a twenty-year term, um, with the new equipment. So that's what we have here in front of us is actually, um, the updated contract, the twenty-year term, which includes all the new equipment that would be installed for the, um, advanced automated weather observation system.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Dave regarding this?
Does anybody else benefit for this system besides the airport? No, or the people that benefit is the airport and all the pilots that come in to the airport. But there's, I mean, I guess is there a local app where you can see what the weather's going to be through the system? I mean, that's maybe a goofy question, but I don't believe so, Councilperson Sutcliffe, yeah.
It's a good question. Brandon?
Brandon, do you have an answer?
Maybe there is. Let's see.
This system is for pilots or anyone to call in to. You can call in. It's basically an automated system that pilots call in to, is what it is. It's an automated weather station. So there's no, there's no real app that would work in a plane that they, that anyone's replaced it with yet.
Okay, so pilots are approaching our airport and they give it a call and it tells them what conditions they're like. Very good. Sounds like something important. Councilman Morrissey?
And this is two thousand dollars per year for twenty years?
Thereabouts two thousand. It depends on what the cost is. It's, it's usually less than two thousand, but the two thousand's kind of.
So it would adjust for inflation.
It's cost, it's cost.
Councilman Soha?
Mr. Mackey, would you help me understand what cost, if any, to the city ongoing?
That would be the two thousand dollars. That's the maintenance for the M Dot, um, technicians that come out and make, uh, update it and do those type of things to it.
And this is something that we've historically been updating. They're just putting in new equipment.
Historically, we've had a contract and we've paid up to that two thousand dollars, actually it's been less, um, for the annual maintenance of the system. Um, this, this particular contract will include all new equipment as opposed to the old equipment that was, uh, has been in there for many years.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments?
Move to approve the amended A W O S contract.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Sutcliffe to approve resolution or to approve the M Dot contract and authorize city manager on behalf of the city of Hillsdale to enter into the Automated Weather Observation System Operation and Maintenance Contract. Can I have a roll call, City Clerk?
Yes, Councilmember Sharp. Soha. Sutcliffe. Veer. Woolfram. Mayor Stockford.
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey. Palladino. And Pratt. Nine zero approved.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, we will move on now to miscellaneous reports. We've got one proclamation and that's it in miscellaneous reports, and it's for Arbor Day, because we are a tree city, USA. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values and enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Adam L. Stockford, Mayor of the City of Hillsdale, do hereby proclaim May tenth, twenty twenty-four as Arbor Day in the City of Hillsdale. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations this sixth day of May, two thousand twenty-four. Okay. Any comments regarding Arbor Day? All right, we will. Hug two of them, one for me, Bruce. All right, we'll move into general public comment. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And you may speak on whatever your heart so desires. The podium is now open.
Richard Smith, sixty-three South Broad Street. Regarding the artillery piece at the courthouse, I happen to be, uh, on the board at the American Legion Post fifty-three. And, uh, we acquired the old Civil War cannon that was at the courthouse several years ago when they put this artillery in there. Um, and we probably have people that are familiar with it. And at next Monday's night's meeting, I will see if I can acquire some funds and, uh, some help to, uh, if, if, if the county commissioners don't mind. As, as long as it's on the county property, I presume, not the city property. But I will look into it and let them know what we can do after next Monday night's meeting. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Richard. I mean, I'm thinking like a couple, a couple gallons of Battleship Gray, oil-based, yeah. Yeah. Any more public comment?
Yes, I also talked to Mr. Engle here. Uh, he had told me too that the Daughters of American Revolution, did I get it right? Daughters of American Revolution is also interested in helping out on, uh, restoring that, so that's a good thing. Now, the other thing, though, I had, my, my complaint is, I had called, uh, Mr. Veer over the weekend about stopping or calling down to my house to come and look at my front yard. Ever since they redid our street, I have not been able to grow grass hardly out in front of my house. My neighbor has seen it, I've seen it. Right now, they got a patch where they came in, they put grass seed down. If you look under there, there is no grass growing. There, there's nothing but a sand pile. And, and they, when they first done that, they had said that they were going to put black dirt back up on top. If you come down there, if there is any black dirt, there's very, very little. And, and I'm still not getting any grass down there. My neighbors, they, they're getting grass. My one neighbor, he's had trouble too. He, he finally got some stuff in there. But for some reason, my particular area is, does not wanna, it's, it's spotty, you know? And I, and I pay my taxes and I, and stuff, and, you know, I'm not behind on anything. All I ask is I'd like to have some nice green-looking grass between the sidewalk and the road. How hard is that to ask for? So if Mr. Veer or, uh, Mr. Sutcliffe would like to come down and take a look, you know, I'd be happy to show them. But, you know, I, I, I've mentioned this before in times past. So, uh, I would like to have one of you two come down there. Mr. Mayor, he, he, uh, walks past there, but, uh, you know, he's got a lot on his mind. And you guys aren't supposed to be my representatives, so I'd like to see you down at my house. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. It's fifty-two Garden Street.
Uh, Joseph Endy. Earlier, I heard you speak about being against special assessments and not running over people's rights. But then you appointed five non-qualified electors to BPU, which violates our city constitution or our charter. All appointments connected commercial power, not one resident until here lately, uh, to advocate for the average resident, just an average resident like me. All connected commercial, commercial power, so I just wanted to bring that to your point. I had to say that. Um, not one assessment on Ripon, not one assessment on hallett, because the city had a vested interest in Three Meadows Development. I think it's totally unfair what this body is doing to the citizens of this community. We have senior citizens that are on a limited income. I, I just don't get what you're doing. Where is all the money going? We have, uh, an airport terminal, three point five million dollars at fifteen percent. It's costing the taxpayers, that's fifteen percent, it's half a million bucks. For what? For Pass AJAC and who else? Huh? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any more public comment?
Scott Sessions, one on two, close to the circle. Um, I have to make in a correction to what Mayor Stockford had said about the Fair Committee. Uh, the Fair Committee's recommendation was a three-point, uh, three-point zero millage to be included into the budget for that year. That was to, uh, offset the cost, uh, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, that was short for to complete the vine, mead, garden and Ripon Avenue. Uh, the budget was approved four to three with two absences. Councilman Stockford at that time voted no. Him and I both were on that committee. Um, if his no vote would have gone through, then vine, mead, ripon and, um, garden would not have been, the streets would not have been done and they would not have been fixed. That's the Fair Committee.
Thank you, Scott. Any more public comment?
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Worth, and I'm here tonight to introduce myself to you. I'm running for state representative for the thirty-fifth district. My husband Nate and I have been married for twenty-four years, and we live south of Quincy, where we've lived for twenty years on our small farm and raised four of our children who are almost all grown now. Our oldest son is married and has two kids of his own. We have two kids in college and our youngest daughter is in tenth grade at Quincy. I actually, though, grew up here in Hillsdale County. I'm a fifth-generation graduate of Waldronary Schools. And my parents, Gary and Bonnie Lininger, still live on the farm where I grew up at. After high school, I went to Michigan State University and I received my degree in agriculture. And then I went on to teach for a few years at Camden and then chose to stay home and raise our four kids, which I had in seven years, so I was a little busy. I spent thirteen years as a homeschooling mom, and I also have taught for four years in public and private education settings. Currently, I'm serving as the Branch County Conservation District Manager. Thank you for endorsing Arbor Day. I just wrapped up selling ten thousand trees over the weekend, so it was very successful. And our family also owns Central Grace Farms, where we raise about half a million chickens a year for a company called Miller Poultry. I'm running for state representative because I'm concerned about the overreach of government into agriculture, education, small businesses, local government, family and individual rights. In November, on Thanksgiving Day of twenty twenty, I stood outside glass doors at a nursing home here in Hillsdale County, where my grandmother stood inside begging for us to come in, but because of COVID and the governor's orders, I was banned from entry. My grandma was on hospice care and she actually passed away three days later, alone with none of her family present. This is a woman whose son gave his life in Vietnam, whose husband served in World War Two. And I believe the way we treated our elderly during this time was very wrong, and I never want to see it happen to anyone else again. As your next state representative, I will be a voice for the voiceless and a defender of freedom. I'm asking that on August sixth, that you go and cast your ballot for a granddaughter, a daughter, a wife, a mother, an agriculturalist, a conservationist and a true conservative. I have paperwork here that I'm glad to hand out afterwards and answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Jen, you can approach and put it on the.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Any more public comment? See you in none. We'll close the podium and we'll move into the city manager's report. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things I wanted to touch on. Just to remind everyone, we do have Myers will be opening in the next week, I believe, so that is a great accomplishment for the entire community. And I know the gas station is open and, and we're going to get to see some of their, their final work, and I think they did a great job. They've been a pleasure to work with, from plan review, from designing the project, helping pay for the infrastructure that was needed for the project. They have been a class act. So if, if the store is anything like and the, the actual work that they've put into this with their staff, it should be a great addition to the community, so just want to remind everyone of that. Also, just to, to mention a couple of things that were kind of brought up or addressed them. One, talking about the budget and, and where the city's money is, is gone or where it is. You know, over the last month, we have had budget workshops where many of the council attended and some of the public attended, where we talked about where the money is and where it's going and how much for each area. So it, and you can find this information on the city's website. We have all our budgets on there, our proposed budgets, our adopted budgets, our audits. All that information is on the city's website, so it's not being hidden from any member of the public. And one will see, and I think as Councilman Veer had mentioned, when you start looking at our general fund and examining it, Hillsdale as a community has a pretty modest general fund. And that's primarily because we do have a lot of nonprofits, the, the county, the hospital, the college, the churches, and all those different nonprofits that have property, but they don't pay property taxes, and that's not a negative thing. That's, you know, something created and they operate within. But that does somewhat put the burden for the general fund on all those that do, do pay the, the taxes from the residents to the businesses and anyone who owns property here that's not a nonprofit. But then that being said, when you look at the amount we're bringing in, it's modest compared to some communities our size. So for example, the City of Marshall, of course, it's on the interstate. They bring in three million dollars more annually than we do in general fund revenue. That's a substantial amount. If we had three billion dollars, we wouldn't have to be talking about special assessments or even an extra millage, but we don't have.
Reaver money.
Some of it, yeah. So that being said, you know, it's just our circumstance. Each community's circumstances are different. You know, I will say, you know, in looking at fixing the roads, you know, we had the fair committee, the fair committee came up with, as Mayor Sessions had indicated, talk, what we had originally done in that first three mills was it applied to debt. It was a mechanism, the charter allowed us to tax for debt. And in doing in that original project, we had debt we brought on for the Garden, Vine, Mead and Ripon projects. But there was some on council that didn't feel that was the appropriate mechanism to use, so that's why we then, and I think you were involved in that, Mayor, and maybe Councilman Bell at the time, didn't feel that that was the appropriate mechanism, so then we took it to a vote of the public for the street millage and the leaf collection, and the count, and the residents had approved that. And as part of that was the discussion on special assessments. And, you know, quicker, though you, you, you know, we're talking about a hundred sixty, two hundred thousand dollars a year, but it all helps in going into that pot. And so that money that's brought in is then invested in other areas of the community to help more streets get done. So I will say that, you know, the team that works on this, besides Kristen, Karen, the finance director, Kristen, the engineer, Kim, the assessor, myself, and I hate to say this, but between the four of us, we've probably got over a hundred years of municipal, local government experience. And if there were other tools out there that we could use that would have something else, that would maintain the level of service the community is accustomed to, we would, we would utilize them if they were, if they were able to provide the same return on investment. It's just we don't have, there, there, the tools that we're using is what we have in front of us. If something comes up, the legislature changes something or adds something that might benefit us, we could look at that in the future. But based on the tools we have in our toolbox, this is the best combination of funding mechanisms in which, in our opinion, and to move the street repairs forward. Otherwise, as I said earlier, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mayor, on, you know, the comment about the reserves, the Westwood project's five and a half million dollars, so we have, our excess money we have from the land sales is about three point two million. So we wouldn't even be able to accomplish the Westwood project yet. Or if we used it on individual neighborhoods, we'd maybe do two or three, and we'd still have a lot to accomplish. So I'll take any questions from council if you have any questions about roads or anything else.
I want to thank you for what you did getting the Myers here. You're the one who was instrumental in getting it done. Fayette Township, it was a two-two vote, and it didn't look good, but you found a way to get it done. You're the one that deserves all the credit. All we did was vote on it. I thank you for what you did.
Thank you, Bruce, but it was a team effort. We all voted on it. There were many, many members of the community that helped. But it was a team effort and we should all be proud of it.
Thanks for the explanation, David. I, I remember a couple of years ago when the assessments were first getting heated and people were opposing them, that I think you had Kristen do a like a survey or not a survey, but a presentation about how long it would have taken to, with the assessments and without the assessments. And if I remember correctly, without the assessments, we would never get ahead of the game with the way that funds are currently able to be procured, whether through grants or through the city's budget or the millages. But with the assessments, we were able to, to make a better inroads and have an endgame years down the road, and I was wondering if you wouldn't mind bringing that back just into communications and petitions so we could revisit it next meeting.
Sure, I'll, I'll talk to Kristen about updating that data. I will say that, if I recall, it was a very low slope even with them, but we were making positive strides in the right direction where without, without it, it, you know, you're basically, we just, there, there is no, no chance of catching up. So, but, but I will talk to Kristen, the engineer, and, and look at updating that information.
Any more questions for Dave? Council comment? Anybody got anything? Councilman Sharp?
I invite all you to come up to the Westwood project. Check it out. Come up to Glendale, Highland, see the work, see what's being done up there. It's amazing. They are whipping right along, even with the rotten weather we've had, they're still out there working and they're consistent. They'll, they'll be there at seven, seven-thirty in the morning, and they'll be there till five at night, every night, because they don't want watching. And they're doing a good job, and it's a lot better than what we had with the Mead, Garden, Vine and Ripon. Parish is doing a great job. We're lucky we got them.
Ripon, Ripon. Vine, Vine, Mead and Garden went very smooth, if you remember correctly. If you come down there, like Bruce suggested, come in off Glendale, because if you come down through Westwood, you can't get through there, so. Councilman Veer?
Dennis, is your address fifty-two Garden Street? Thirty-four. I, I'll, I'll stop then.
Councilwoman Brett?
Is anyone going to the walk-through at Meyer tomorrow? Ten thirty? Okay. I'll be there.
Any more council comment? Councilman Palladino?
I've received multiple reports of people getting deer ticks, just walking on the sidewalks in Hillsdale on their children, just playing in front yards, not even in forested areas. So one, just PSA, but two, we should possibly call Public Services Committee. I mean, this is a severe threat to, to life and to health. So I don't know what we need to do if we could allocate more money toward reducing the deer population. I mean, with, with the scale of the threat, the deer population really needs to be zero in the City of Hillsdale if that's at all a threat, or if we can maybe, you know, enlist a possum army to come help us, but we should discuss, possums, sorry, kill five thousand ticks a year. Save a possum, adopt a possum. Actually, there are opossums in North America, so I don't want to misidentify them. But yes, we should chat about that.
Any more council comment? Anybody got anything interesting? Councilman Soha?
I, so Mr. Church's last meeting, I made the thing that I thought we were gonna open up a can of worms, voting in favor of it, but under his specific circumstances, very unique. And then, you know, city manager warned us as ardently as he could to, to avoid it because, you know, like the arguments we heard multiple times tonight, if you did it for them, you gotta do it for everyone, which I don't agree with that. But I, I taxation is, is, it's a terrible thing, right? I mean, it's a necessary evil unfortunately in our world because that's the way that generations before us funded, chose to fund everything. The way to overcome that would be through philanthropy and for us to endow the city like men have endowed the college, but nobody's willing to do that. Nobody wants to open up their pocketbook to give to the city to accomplish these things, so how do we accomplish them? We've got a one point nine, two million dollars in tax revenue, and then another million, and then rounding up in pilot revenue. And then now the rest of our seven million dollar budget is through profit sharing and grants and other things that the city manager works hard to do. Well, two point four million dollars out of our budget goes to city and police and fire protection, and then we have specific millages that are designated just for the roads. That gets up to the three million dollars. How do we run the city services? How do we pay our employees? How do we do any of that stuff? You know, our budget is extremely tight. Everybody's budget is extremely tight. My, my food costs have gone up exorbitantly. I have two less children in my house and I'm paying seventy percent more for groceries. It, 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 it's, it's a compounding effort, and I, I don't particularly care for the assessments. Fortunately, I see them as a necessary evil presently so that we can secure our fine city for our children's children. Councilman Veers used to live on South Howell, just south of the South Howell, just south of the hospital when he was a kid. Those culverts there were flooding back in the seventies when he lived there as a child. We were just finally able to get that fixed through special assessments. And now those roads are beautiful and the water drains, and it's not an issue anymore. It would, it would, it would not have been done had the assessments not been assessed. And so as much as I dislike them, I see that they're necessary, and I would, you know, I, I, I hate to bring this up, but my wife and I, we chose to give five thousand dollars to the city for the roads because I felt like if I'm going to assess my constituents, then I ought to feel the burden of it myself. Because I live on Broad Street, so the state's gonna, the state's gonna pave that road in twenty twenty-six and hopefully it'll be three lanes and really nice, but nevertheless, I would encourage every man that has the means to open up his pocketbook and choose to donate to the city. And if, if Mr. Hendy mentioned there's a number of people who have financial hardships, say if there's somebody who wasn't able to, maybe, I don't know if they can designate it or not, we'd have lawyers determine that, but open your pocketbook and serve the city well with your, the, the men who have the means to do it. Stop just complaining about everything and coming in here and castigating this, this fine board because we're just trying to do what's best for the city. It infuriates me. I, I want to thank the city manager and his staff for the hard and diligent work and Parish excavating for doing such a fine job right now. And I hope we can get all our roads and culverts and every other part of our infrastructure, our drains and our lifts and our sewer system and everything else up into the twenty-first century.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Anybody else have any more council comment? Motion to adjourn? Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Soha, to adjourn. All in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. This meeting's adjourned.